We're meeting through orders and please stand for the Republican major.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, verily and just as from.
Thank you. Our time together is very short tonight because many of you have other meetings to get to. So we will try to move very quickly through our business, but I think we should start with[56.64][56.64]introduction since a lot of us still know each other or we're seeing each other for the first time. Why don't we, and please use your microphones so that you can be heard in the rest of the room. Joel, why don't we start with you? We'll come around this week, please.
Joseph P. Adam Board of Finance.
Chairman Alonzo, Chairman of P&amp;Z, Adam.
Nancy Gorste, Killingworth, Thorntman. Kathy Hino, First Selectment, Killingworth.
Louine Ehl, Selectment, Killingworth.
Gwen Stellmer, Chair of the Killingworth Board of Finance.
Eric Thorntman, Board of Ed.
Six seconds time, Board of Ed.
Jerry Matty, Board of Ed, Adam.
Kathy Sandy, Board of Ed, killing someone.
Brenda Pussy, Board of Ed, Adam.
Floyd Newis, Regional School District, Seventeen Month.
Joanne Best, Board of Ed, Adam.
Howard Theory, Superintendent.
Former Board of Education, Adam.
Joel D'Angelo, Board of Ed.
Holly Hageman, Assistant Superintendent.
Rich Perrott, Town Attorney for Adam.
Liz Malarda, First Selectment of Adam.
Larry Vanity, Selectmen, Adam.
Kay Anderson, Chair, Adam, EDC.
Bill Warner, Town Planner, Town, Adam.
Melissa Shaw, Selectmen, Adam.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Our first item is dealing with right of first refusal question, and I thought maybe Mr. Corella or First Selectmen Malarda could give us what the town's interpretation of that is, please.
Yeah, I will, I'm gonna let Rich answer the question, Joanne, but I would like to, just before we start getting into the right of first refusal, Thursday night, there was a P&amp;Z meeting that was held, and I have a copy of a letter that I wrote to the commissioners of P&amp;Z in my full support of putting Swan Hill into conservation. So, one of the things that I would like to do tonight, if possible, is to get the board to, they can't vote, but to weigh in and give the town. Swan Hill is a very important piece of property to the Town of Adam. Its intent was to stay into open space. It's something very much that I would say 100% of us are looking to do and are in support of. So, I would request that the Board of Education consider voting to put Swan Hill, donate it to the Town of Adam and/or the Adam Land Trust to guarantee that it stay in perpetuity in open space. So before we get into the right of first refusal, utmost and foremost, I think that's a really important piece of this, and you know, Attorney Corella can talk further on that interpretation of what the resolution means. But I just, before we start, I just wanna state for the record that that is very important to the town, and that is something that I'm looking to see happen, and asking foremost if it be handled separately from the building and the property from the RFP. I have other comments about the building and the property also, but we can hold off for there. But I just wanted to initially hand out, I have a copy, there's three copies of each. Board member wants to take a copy for the record, that would be great.
So, should we start here?
We can. I'll just say that I think we, as a board, always been very mindful and aware of how much the Swan Hill property means to the town, to the people who visit there and use the trails, and I'm not so sure that there's really any major problem in moving forward with what we're talking about with board members, if there's a question or a consideration that you'd like to talk about.
Joan, yes ma'am, can I, can I make a motion that the Board of Ed donate the Swan Hill property to the Town of Adam?
You sure can? Okay, seconded by Joel, okay. Any discussion as to, I don't know details of what that would be, I'm not sure that we need to get into too much depth on that.
I would like the motion to include that it be put into open space for perpetuity so that the past resolution that got handled in 1972, you know, we never thought there would be ambiguity or it would come to that, so that there's absolutely no question for future generations for this piece of property.
Kathy, do you want to amend?
Yes, I'll move that we donate the Swan Hill property to the Town of Adam for open space, in perpetuity.
Second, okay. Is there any further discussion, do any board members, yes, please, can you just talk into the?
Sure. My question is, is, would you like it to, you mentioned both the Town of Adam and/or the Land Trust, or Adam's Land Trust, so do we need to specify that at this point? I'm sure there are certain legalities about how the property needs to get transferred. I'm sure those won't get resolved tonight, so how do we proceed? How do we get back to crossing the Ts and dotting the Is to make it happen in the right of?
So, anything that the Town of Adam does, whether we sell it or buy it or whatever, has to go to town meeting. So I would say that your motion includes to the Town of Adam, and I will have the legal notice read that it would be for open space and perpetuity, and then we will go to town meeting and we can vote on it to donate it to the Land Trust. I'm sure the Land Trust has interest in it, but we've only had brief conversations about property going to the Land Trust, so I would just wanna make sure that that's the case. The whole point is to protect the property, so I would say to protect the motion, to go to the Town of Adam at this point, and then legally we can walk you through the process to donate to the Land Trust.
Okay, so then can we agree then that your attorney will talk to the attorney about all legal matters related to this and make sure that if our motion gets drafted, there is paperwork for whatever needs to get done, gets done, so that the intention of getting this into the hands of Adam and its residents and/or the Land Trust and into open space and perpetuity actually is enabled?
I think you would wanna specify the acreage and some specifics in front of the town meeting.
Yeah, we definitely need to work out those property lines and details, and that's the thing, I think the board is being asked, and the motion on the floor signals our intent, and then some of these logistical details, if those without saying, will have to be worked out.
Just a question, I think, did I tell you tonight, I think you were asking, so the motion that Kathy made and I seconded, is that the essence of a motion, and I understand that will be worked out legally with the two councils, specifying acreage and boundaries and all of those things, and then we will come back and officially adopt that? Is that how I understand it?
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
So, the procedure would be along the lines of going to the Town Planning Zoning Commission in Adam for regulatory eight dash twenty-four land use review, followed by a town meeting of the Town of Adam, and then we come back to you with the approval of those two bodies for a formal, you know, motion on your part to actually convey the land over to the town at that point in time.
One quick addition, that our town planner just mentioned, Bill Warner, that there be access to the trails in the back, should the 10 acres up front be sold or utilized for anything other than the school, we would have to have access.
I would probably, I would suggest a friendly amendment by one of the board members along the lines of this is conditioned, requisite, legal requirements occurring, including referendum, zone change, etc.
Access.
So, do we vote on this now, or do we vote once the official motion is completed, look out for the details, and then that's a bridge action?
Sure. And I think that was what I was trying to clarify, that the board is trying to signal this.
I just wanted to begin my question. Yes, sir. Just one, so my question was, is this something we can vote on tonight in my relatively informal motion, or do we wanna wait until the attorney's work out his specific language and property lines and that sort of thing, to include those into the form, or the formal motion?
That's my question.
Yeah. Do we vote now, or do we wait?
Sort of give action to council to work out the legalities with our intent, nation making crystal clear that you understand our intent, open to both parties, and then sort of work through the things that I don't understand, the legality and things like that, and then bring it back to us and adopt for, just trying to make this the easiest way we can.
Right, 'cause it may be in a situation that legally, for example, we can or can't donate, or we can or can't, have to sell it for a dollar or something like that, there might be some details on it that we don't, that we don't know, so the motion may or may not need to be revisited either. That's my informal verbal motion.
I think that's what council was trying to get at as well. There's some legalities on your side, the regional schools districts side, that need to be reviewed, there's certainly some legal steps that the town has to undertake in order to accept such a donation, so I think for purposes of tonight, it's the intention, seems to be the intention of the school board to have that process start, and perhaps that's the nature of the motion, is to start those wheels in motion, start that process, and then we have to come back to actually do a more formal motion to actually convey the property, so that we have issues like access addressed and those things.
Yeah, I think we're just trying to signal our intent, and I, to Kathy's question, I guess, is, do we really, do we need a rewording of the motion again to make it less definite and make it more contingent upon further details?
How about something like, I'm moving that we initiate the process that the board donate slash sell, and then to the thirty-one years old, the Swan Hill property to the Town of Adam.
And authorize legal counsel to pursue, to represent legal details? You know, the thing is, we're actually, we're in agreement, I think, with the spirit of your motion, I would.
Right, you wanna get the motion right, because if we're to vote on it, we wanna get it right, okay, so, I'm trying.
Yes. Hang on for just a second. Okay, all right. Kathy, please. I am personally in sympathy with the spirit of the, but just to add to the list of legal things to be resolved, is the status of Killingworth's interest in any property? And I don't know the answer to that. But as, as a, you know, as forty-five year old district, I don't know whether we have to get town approval in any way, or I don't know.
Right, meaning is there any process or procedure you need to go through? You are in support of the motion, however, you also know that you may have other issues associated with procedure as this happens, and you wanna make sure those get adjusted as well?
Exactly.
Thank you.
And so the motion on the floor then is to initiate the process of donating the Swan Hill acreage to the Town of Adam, okay.
I have one more question.
Of course, of course.
Just so I, just so I clear you, is it clear to both, sorry, is it clear to both council at this table, the intent of this board, is that?
Oh yeah, the intent, uh...
I just wanna make sure that you are blessed with knowing what to do.
Shake hands.
The intent is clear, again, I would just add that petition of all the legal prerequisites of perpetual.
Joanne, may I? Yes, Melissa, go ahead. I'm really heartened that you guys are taking this vote, and I'm excited that you actually directed legal counsel to do some work on this. That being said, will the Board of Education or the Chair and Superintendent drop their petition against the conservation zone change for Swan Hill? And the threat of lawsuit, of suing the Town of Adam?
We'll have to discuss it, Larry, it's obviously gonna render that functioning moot, assuming all the prerequisites happen and the property is transferred.
So yes, I think that would be included in the process?
I think that would be included in the process of crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is to make our intention a reality, would be to include that in the piece of puzzle. If that, if any reason is preventing that to happen, to deal with it so that it does not.
Is this something that the board is gonna vote on tonight to support that petition that went to the Planning and Zoning Commission? I'm just curious, that's kind of the elephant in the room here.
Yeah, my concern is when we get into that level of specificity, it's something that's not specifically on the agenda, that we're going beyond what the agenda would recommend would be appropriate.
Actually Swan Hill isn't on the agenda either, so.
Well, yes, fold it down to the Swan Hill first refusal discussion.
I'd like to not get mucked up in detail, so something really good that's about to happen. So, I'd like to reiterate that we have a motion on the floor to initiate the process of donating Swan Hill acreage to the Town of Adam, conditioning of all legal issues get resolved that would otherwise prevent us from actually doing that, and that would include anything that happened, any hearing, or any protest, or any other thing that was initiated at any point, is to remove all of that stuff, freeing the pathway so that this can actually get done.
Clearly. So are there any other questions or concerns about this particular motion? If not, we could move to a vote if everyone's ready? Okay. We are without our board clerk tonight, so I will attempt to do this. Aaron.
Yes.
Thank you. Suzanne.
Yes.
Uh, Jerry.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes. Kathy. Brenna.
No, just kidding, yes.
You've got that playful sense of humor, I always like that. Joanne, yes.
Maura.
Yes.
Sorry, writing as fast as I can. Sue.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
I believe the motion carries. Thank you all very much. Moving on, we were in the middle of that, of the discussion of right of first refusal, Liz, and I think, or Rich, did you wanna add anything else regarding that?
I don't know that we've actually talked about it yet.
Okay, well, Dan Strain.
In terms of a right of first refusal, or any alien ability on the property that RSD Seventeen has, I ask the town, First Selectment, to inquire as to entitle restrictions, if there were any statutory or legal restrictions that RSD Seventeen might have in their formation documents, and then if there was any statutory requirements. I checked with council for the school district as well, he and I had a good conversation about that. The title search reveals that there was no deed restrictions, that would be any type of reversionary interests or requirement that the school district offer the property back to the town, and there's no statutory requirements that we could find necessarily requiring the school district to offer the property back to the town in the event it chose to dispose of it. The only thing that surfaced was this 1972 board resolution from the school district that is not the model of clarity, that, I don't know if any, I'll just read it so people are understanding what we're looking at. It says, "Resolution: First option to buy regional property. Mr. Morone presented the following resolution to it and moved it to be adopted. Let towns of Killingworth and Adam be given first refusal by the regional school district, number seventeen, Board of Education, on any property previously transferred to the district by representative, I'm sorry, by the respective towns, which is to be disposed of by the region." It was moved and seconded and voted on on a, two, four to two vote. So this is from September of 1972. The property of the school was donated or transferred to the school district in July, I believe, of 1972, so it was the same year, shortly after the transfer. One of the things council and I do regularly is try to interpret what happened 50 years ago based on five sentences, and trying to interpret what this really means today in practical reality. Nothing was done back in 1972 to really reflect this on the land records, nothing was done to secure the town's, whatever this right is, there's some ambiguity here about whether or not the town of Killingworth actually has a right of first refusal on this property, because it says that towns of Killingworth and Adam be given first right of refusal. I don't think that's the intention, it talks about on property that is transferred by the respective towns, that's my interpretation, I don't believe that the towns have a right in each other's town to acquire the property, but that's not very clear here, and it's not very clear as to how it's supposed to work. It says, you know, "Given a first refusal on any property previously transferred, which is to be disposed of by the region." I think that implies that there's a plan to dispose of it, that has to be, happen first by the district, and then follow it on some sort of right of refusal by the town, whether that means it needs to match that offer, whether it needs to come up with its own fair market value of that property, whether, I don't know what it is, right? So I think that's kind of where we are. I, you know, it's my opinion that it would be in the best interest of all the parties to try to give some effect to this in some manner, but I think it's up to y'all to decide how that actually transacts later, okay? So that's, it's my thoughts, okay?
And I would add, and Rich and I did speak, and this is pretty rare, but two attorneys agreeing pretty much on everything, but we're in agreement on all of that. The only thing I would add is, as I've mentioned, when there are certain promises, certain agreements under the law that must be in a document or writing signed by the parties, and one of those things is a transaction regarding real estate, and just from a purely legal standpoint, my view is that that resolution, while, you know, a nice indication of intent in the future, isn't legally binding, having said that, there's nothing to stop the parties from acting in the spirit of it at this point.
And that was gonna be my question, we do have some leeway here, some latitude to act, okay? Meaning that we have some latitude to act, and so I welcome any comments from any board members to have, I'm out of world tonight, so can I also make a motion to initiate discussion, a motion, sorry, make a motion to initiate discussion of donating the HES building and land around the building, donate slash selling to the Town of Adam?
We have two motions, and I have to second that.
Yes, I should have said selling in a nominal fashion, not the...
Right, donate, you're taking donating off the table, I think you made up.
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not sure if that's possible, but, but similar to the motion I just made earlier on, Swan Hill property is to initiate the process to investigate, we can't really, we don't know the details to actually vote, yes, we can do it, and we can do it, but just to initiate it, and that's good.
Any questions from any board members about indicating our intent on this?
I would like to ask the attorneys, have you talked about this piece of property at all, and any of the legal requirements associated with what the town would need to do, or Killingworth would need to do, or RSD Seventeen would need to do to make something like this happen as well?
Not with any specificity, I mean, we haven't talked in any details, very conceptual what this document says, and just in general, I think council knows, but the public certification, there's a number of steps that Adam or any, you know, town of Killingworth would have to do as well, for, again, eight dash twenty-four review, a town meeting, so there's a number of steps that the town would have under this, or a referendum, that's right.
And once again, I'll concur, the only thing I would add is that, so we're not sitting, you know, two years from now with this building and a piece of property, I'm wondering what's going on, is I would suggest we add a, but not later than date, so that if it's not perfected within a reasonable period of time, you can actually store it around.
Thank you for that clarification, because we have our RFP on the table, so we need to manage it. My concern being that we should just, like, comment on the motion, is that... Can you speak directly into the mic, is that, what's the, what's the impact of the RAC, RFP, if we enter into this process? So do we use RAC if we, you know, if we take it off?
I think we should talk about the idea first, and then we can talk about the RAC proposal and implications afterwards, I don't, I don't wanna lose the essence of the...
No, of course, and the motion on the floor is to initiate the process rather than make a decision somehow. Go ahead, Mo.
I'm curious how, if it's, first if the Town of Adam is even interested in it, right? And how, if the, if, if the selectmen say they're not interested, but the town is, like, does it go to the town to vote, or is it the selectmen, like, how does that?
Well, that's a process question, I guess, for the board.
So we actually, Larry has a question, and I'll answer your question more. Okay. So there's a process, right? So the town needs to decide, just like for Swan Hill, it's exactly the same process. So the town would need to decide either by town meeting or referendum if they wanted to accept the property, whether it's donation or by sale, and it would go to vote to the taxpayers of the Town of Adam, okay?
But to Floyd's point about a date certain, can we talk more about that at some point? Go ahead, Mo.
Question is, if the board of selectmen, the board of finance approached you and asked you to pause this, would you have done it? Would you have done it? Pause this, the closing of HES?
Well, that isn't...
That's my question.
And I don't know that we can actually answer that question, because there are many members on the board, would they, are you asking each member to say would they have changed their vote?
Well, yeah, maybe, maybe that's what I'm asking, yeah.
Okay, well, I can only speak for myself, but it would have to be more than just knowing that you are asking us to pause, we've, I'd wanna know why, I'd wanna know, you know, what the actual would be that would take place in lieu of doing this, and...
We paused for, for the one year, and did another complete study, let's, let's start there.
I agree with that, to pause for one year.
I mean, if that's your question, if the board of, if the board of members would have asked you, would you have paused it? That's my question.
But that's a hypothetical that we have...
We need to pause it, we need to pause it so that the Town of Adam can store it in the house.
These are the questions, these are the questions I would ask, that I'm asking.
And that really, as I'm being pointed out to you, that's really not an item for this particular agenda, Larry, I don't mean to be impolite about this, but it's, it's difficult to shoehorn this issue into this particular agenda, because we are talking, here we are talking in terms of trying to initiate a process, yes, go ahead, Joel, please.
Answer that question, I think, I thought, maybe I didn't, but I thought I answered this last week, right? Because I think that's, in essence, what you did, right? We received a letter, two letters, right, the same kind of thing. We received a letter, or two letters, with that same kind of theme, asking for a pause for it, and I thought, my question, right, also, Joy, excuse me, Suzanne's question of what, what are we gonna do during this pause, but my initial question, a big question is, okay, if you did that publicly, or speaking for all constituents, are you willing to, those are just words unless you connect that to, yes, I'm willing to pause this and support for all constituents of Adam spending an extra 1.2 million dollars? And if that's the answer, then, then I can begin to discuss that, but if I can't connect
But if I can't connect those two things, then I, it's, I can't.
Okay, so we have no legal process to go to referendum, to go to town meeting on anything other than the vote or non-vote of the Board of Selectmen. And this is something the Board of Education voted on and decided to do, was told by town leadership to weigh in. We did have the meetings and obviously the motions to come in, but there's no mechanism for us to find out what all our constituents think. So to just have the three selectmen weigh in and give their comments, which we did, you know, we kind of felt that, you know, the decision of closing the school was put back on us and we don't have the authority to vote on that or not. So the question is, the concern is that it's fine if we pause and we go through this process, but, you know, for the record, I don't have a way, unless the town attorney wants to tell me I do. Statute doesn't allow me to vote on the school. The board's budget isn't under our purview. The ownership isn't under our purview. The closing isn't under our purview. And I just want the record to be clear that that isn't something that the Board of Selectmen of Haddon is responsible for. And I just want to ask the question because it's seeming that it got put back on us to take an action, which, to be honest with you, I feel we really had no power to do from the beginning.
I think we were asking your opinion, given all things considered, where would you come out on this? And you gave us your answer. We didn't say, do you vote in favor of this or you do not vote in favor? We asked your opinion.
Right.
And you gave your opinion.
Right.
And I'm sure you felt the weight of the world on your shoulders when you gave that opinion. I completely understand that. The, are you today saying, we're here together, united, we would like you to pause this? We are willing to assume. So rather than you ask the hypothetical question, if we did this, would you have done that? Tell us what you're doing.
My voice.
But again, this is really not appropriate to, okay, go with this.
I mean, so at this point, we've made motions and Swan Hill come back to the town, right? So now we're possibly, again, I don't know what the ramifications are for Killingworth. The way I read this, and again, I'm not an attorney, which is why we have a town council, is that it's seeming that the heart of this resolution was that property that came from Killingworth would go back to Killingworth and property that came from Haddon would go back to Haddon. So now if that's the case and we go back to Haddon to say, okay, do you want this school or not? Okay, that takes this whole RFP process, changes it, and now moves it to Haddon. And there are pieces in the RFP, which is why we're all here together to decide, because there's some things in the RFP that a developer is asking for or not. And this is going to be a building that is, if we're saying going to be a year, is now going to be closed that much longer, right? And it was the whole economics of the center that I was very concerned about. So I don't know, Suzanne, if we're necessarily, you know, we were asked the question and I felt our questions were answered, but in all honesty, I'd just like to know where the board stands on it. I mean, that's, I think, that's what we're asking.
We asked on what? Agree.
For pause or no pause? I think we have a vote on the record, if pause or no pause. If what you're saying is your position has changed in terms of how you want to represent the Board of Selectmen of Haddon, then you need to say that, right? Because what you're, you're asking a hypothetical question. If we did this, would you do that? What I'm asking you is, are you doing that? Because then, you know, I don't know what the board would do, but the other event hasn't happened yet, so.
Right. And many residents are in favor of us saying to pause, but then we also have residents who say, don't pause. So again, in order to get the census of what the townspeople are going to do, because at the end of the day, it's up to them about property, we don't have a way to measure what they want us to do now.
So are you saying that you, in answer to the question of, are you interested at all in us either donating it or selling it for some nominal amount, you can't answer that question? Is that what you're saying? I'm trying to figure out what you're actually saying.
I'll add something. I think, in my opinion, pausing is leave the school open, start the process over, create a broader task force with parents, community, other community members. I don't see a problem in stopping the process here. I understand some teachers might have been laid off, bring them back. I don't think this is a difficult decision at this point. The school stays open, the economics stay the same in the center of town. Then sit down with the Board of Selectmen and the townspeople and have these discussions, how would this look or what should we do? I think we've rushed through this process a little too fast.
So Suzanne, the other piece of it is that when we had initial discussions about the town purchasing the property or not, right? I mean, I don't know how we're going to afford to pay for this. Again, it's, at the end of the day, it's up to the townspeople. But now that this has come to light, it almost changes things in a certain degree. And I feel that if the townspeople have a right to vote on if they want the property or not, that might be a good indication for us to know how they feel about keeping the school open or closed.
But Liz, if I may, the restructuring portion of this was always going to be within the board's authority to do. The only question that we're here tonight to talk about is the disposition of the property. The decision on restructuring and closing and creating the intermediate school has been made and voted on twice. And I, let me finish. I, I understand what you're saying, but it was always going to be within the board's authority to make the decision how it wanted to structure its school system, and it has.
There's only the option of just mothballing HES for one year. Move forward with the redistricting and then when that falls on its face, then you'll have Haddon Elementary School to put the children back in. Or we're just going to say to the office of this board, so we mothball BUR, or we use that for district offices, we use it for family services and the other items that I had mentioned in the past. And then you continue on with HES, the school stays open, and you still have your redistrict plan.
So I'm a little confused here because we've already voted on this twice.
And we've allowed this discussion, even though it's probably not really relevant to our motion on the floor or our agenda here tonight, and the board has voted on this twice.
But new things have come to light. The Board of Selectmen are now asking for a year pause.
Hold on, I'm not exactly hearing.
No, so we voted on the redistricting a year ago, a couple weeks, sorry. We voted a year ago or so on restructuring to start with. And then, was it two or three weeks ago? It came up as a motion again that we pause it for a year, and that was also defeated from seven four.
So let's return then to the motion that is actually on the floor, which is to initiate a process of having the town of Haddon determine if it would like to, well, re-initiate the process of trying to find out if the town of Haddon would like to take ownership of the HES building and the surrounding 10 or 12 acres. That's the motion on the floor.
Can we add to that motion to pause for one year with Haddon?
Brenda, we voted on that too. With the motion from the Boards of Selectmen, I mean.
Since that motion has already been defeated, it would require an amendment of the agenda to, for a motion to rescind the motion that we're talking about. Or we can't do that in a special way. We have a motion on the floor and we've gone off on this tangent, which may not be relevant to the motion that we're trying to discuss about initiating a process for this, this building. Eric, did you have something?
You do not have to accept a motion to amend your motion, so.
So I'm curious, so Liz, are you guys interested in exploring whether the town of Haddon is interested in the property, so?
That her, this, you know, even though they didn't go through and put this on title and tidy it up the way that they should have, I think the intent was for the property to come back to the town. So I think that the town should be able to vote on that. And I would like to be able to explore that process as to what we need to do and go through the process through an A24 with P and Z and put it up. I actually think it should go to referendum.
Meaning the ownership piece, because the building will still be closed. The ownership piece, okay, just want to, go ahead, Mo.
Well, I'm just curious with that all being said, because that process can take some time, right? That could take a while. Why not make a motion to pause it for a year to see what the town wants? If Haddon decides they want it, listen to hear me, don't listen to talk back. If the town decides that they want to keep the building, right? Can you guys hear? I never know this. If they decide that they want to keep the building to do whatever it is with at the close of the 1920 school year, wouldn't it make sense to keep it open and as a thriving piece of the center until they have closed it, until they have the opportunity to move into it? Do you know what I mean? Instead of keeping it empty for a year, what's, why not?
These are two separate...
They're not two separate things, it's the same thing.
Trying to keep them safe.
We already voted on that.
Yes, I understand that, we already voted on it.
We voted on it a couple weeks ago. We voted, there was a motion on the floor that we delayed for a year. We had the motion submitted.
Liz, I mean, go ahead, Joel.
Are they interested in spending up 1.2 million dollars?
But that, I don't know.
Yeah, don't keep these columnars on this side because that's what it costs. If you want to keep it, that building open for a year, there's a cost to it. And to keep our education where it is, right, to keep it essentially just stagnant, it costs 1.2 million dollars. And if the town, if the Board of Selectmen certainly presented motions to pause, but those words are meaningless if they're not connected to the cost. And if they want to spend, if they want to tell, and with all due respect, not the friends of HES, they're totally clear on what they want. I got it. I've spoken to many of them and I admire that position. I'm talking about if they want to see for all of the constituents of Haddon is to say, yes, we want the Board of Ed to pause and, and Killingworth.
And Killingworth.
And Killingworth, and for this cost.
But we have been down, we've been down this road and we have, as a board, voted on this. Let me try to bring us back to the motion on the floor.
We had one little comment. The people in the audience are probably mostly Haddon residents. And the people that their feet are dug into the tar to keep this paused are Killingworth residents. I know, except for Joey and SCS, you are against it also, but just show of hands, how many, how many friends... No, there's older, there's older...
It's not relevant and it's out of order. I'm sorry to have to give this.
Nothing, please. No, I just want to have Joe, because this is different now. This is not the same situation because two weeks ago, when we placed that vote, Haddon had not said that they were even interested in what considers going to a referendum with the town. Things are different.
The motion on the floor is about a transfer of ownership to the town of Haddon. If you can please focus on that, let me just ask my question. Liz, assuming for the moment that we agree to initiate this process, what's the next step for the town of Haddon?
So the next step was the Board of Selectmen would refer it to P and Z for an A24, would be processed, or Selectmen would set a town meeting and or a referendum, and we would go to vote to do that. And we can actually do that. I had the town clerk pull paperwork. We can do that within 30 days. My thought is, defibrillations are very expensive and I don't want to see the town spend money unnecessarily. So if there's a way to tie the purchasing or donation or whatever it is, and again, I don't know if those can be worked out in that timeframe, I would probably put it on the same ticket as the school budget because we're already going to referendum on that.
That's fine.
If not, we don't make that timetable, then I would probably request the registrals to just do two vote, voting places for a referendum and save the cost for a third to be able to do that. But again, the timetable is what it is. And that way, the residents of Haddon can vote whether they want to purchase the building or not, and then that would give us a resolution as to how to move forward.
Right, which would have absolutely no effect on restructuring and the closing of the school. It would just be an ownership question, not a, not a closure question.
And they, I know that. It's about purchasing the building.
Right, and just to clarify, my motion was purchase for a nominal fee. I mean, this isn't purchase for a dollar.
I understand that.
Either purchase or donate.
I understand that. But whatever that is, that would have to be because I have a timeframe to be able to get something on the ticket for, you know, for the Secretary of State, for the town to be able to vote that. And I do not think that is something that the three of us should decide. I think that's something that the town should decide.
It's absolutely fine. I was just trying to clarify that this is a separate issue from restructuring, closure, the creation of the intermediate school, et cetera. Board members, are there any other questions or discussion about this motion that you're about to vote on?
I'm getting ready to vote on it, so.
Can I ask one quick clarified question?
Yes.
Was your vote in the past to close the school or restructure the district?
The restructuring motion contains several elements to it, including the creation of the intermediate school, the creation of two K three primary schools, and the closure of Haddon Elementary School. That's the motion that passed on March 6th of last year, and the wording is more or less exactly that. So it is, it's one unit composed of those three elements.
Okay, would you consider adding the closure part to the agenda for the next meeting to re-discuss that since you're not going to discuss it? So I also think I'm glad Liz wants to go to referendum with this, but I think May is actually too early. There's a lot of meetings I think that we need to have to educate our residents on this issue.
Well, Melissa, that's, that's why I think we introduced the element of a date certain because as you know, we have a proposal that we have received, the proposer followed all of the guidelines that were asked of it in the request, and I don't think it's fair of us to leave them dangling. Now, this could be 60 days of dangling for them, but that, I think, just my personal opinion is that should be the limit. We will, if you get on the ballot at the May 7th referendum, we should know by May 8th what the town of Haddon has decided as far as ownership is concerned.
Yeah, technically, the RFP issue is pretty open-ended, so you didn't give yourselves the time to, to think about this. It's totally open-ended. There's no end date to the RFP. He puts down the $10,000, you can sit on it for as long as you want. So I really think that we need some time in Haddon. I would suggest actually six months at least for us to have some of these meetings to discuss taking the property. I appreciate you all making that motion. I think that's wonderful and I hope you do vote yes, but I think the date should be at least six months out.
Okay, I don't personally.
My concern with that is that if Haddon turns down the offer, that we lose RFP. I hope you do.
Yeah, well, that may be the case, but we're asking and trying to get a decision in the most efficient possible way because if the town chooses at this referendum not to take the property, then we have a process that we would like to maintain and not drag out. So I'm going to call the question unless there is some other...
Joey, I do have one question.
Yes, go ahead, Kate.
If the town were to acquire the building, would there be any future use restrictions included within the sale contract, limiting future usages of the building?
I think we'd have to discuss some of... I think we'd have to discuss some of that. I guess we're signaling our intention of wanting to start the process, but the dotted I's and crossed T's of that probably would still...
It's something the attorneys would work on.
Well, that's like the Swan Hill thing, we are talking about working out details.
With the Killmore as well.
But it would not be our intention to limit the capacity for Haddon to use this building in any way, shape, or form that they would like to. Any further questions or discussion?
Can we just re...
Please, reiterate.
If I can remember, I move to initiate the process to offer the HES building and associated lands to the town of Haddon.
Okay, well, that is just a clarification of the motion, because it was on the floor in that form. Okay. Okay, let's vote. Eric?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Yes.
Kathy, thank you.
Yes.
Brenda, thank you. Joanne, yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Thank you. Sue?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Thank you all. Okay. So, the question, I think, the only other question, because the next item on the agenda is a discussion of a process for review of the RAC proposal, and so my question to the board is, because we have now said we want to initiate a process of seeing if the town of Haddon would like to own this building and property, can we go along a parallel track and start to at least begin looking more closely at the proposal that is in front of us? Because it doesn't require us to, but we don't want to, we don't necessarily have to lose any time, just in case the town comes back in May and says, our voters voted not to take it. I think we'd not want to begin our process with RAC, but at least have the framework of one. Does that seem logical? Or shall we just wait for 60 days?
I think we should probably at least amongst ourselves discuss how we feel about the proposal, but we should let, I could also feel that we should let this process in Haddon roll out as it pulls out. That will inform our decision on whether or not the RAC proposal meets the future use view, future use views or ambitions that we all want for Haddon, and watching how that discussion plays out in Haddon itself and in Killmore to some lesser extent will give us a clarifying vision of whether or not this RAC proposal is something that is worthwhile or not.
And that's fine, that's why I brought it up, just to ask if we can afford a 60-day free, well, not freeze, but a waiting period without doing anything, but that's fine, that's why I asked. Yeah, that's fine, that's why I brought it up.
Can we at least have RAC come in and present her proposal and answer questions? Just have an open Q&amp;A session? Because we, if we turn it down, we've already turned it down on the written materials, and I think it at the very least deserves an open discussion and Q&amp;A.
Well, that would be for the board to decide, and I'd like to know how you feel about that. I personally have no objection to that, it doesn't bind us to anything, it's simply informational.
Just information. Please, board members... Could we come in and present and answer questions from the board, and possibly could we include the town of Haddon officials as well?
Well, there's that too. But it doesn't do anything to preclude this process that we're having the town go through.
Yeah, just an information session. So have them come, present, be there for questions.
I agree.
I thought they were supposed to be here tonight.
Well, no, we didn't.
We thought that was discussed last week.
No, we didn't get quite that far, because the process hasn't been established yet for doing that. We needed this meeting.
I agree. Why not include all these people around this table for a presentation? I don't think that hurts in any way.
Okay. A presentation is fine, and I, I hope it wouldn't degenerate into an inquisition.
I just want to know, just want to...
I would be interested in, other than the board's decision, if anybody else has a point of view about hearing more information about this proposal. So is anybody else of a point of view?
Kathy?
Well, it's, just looking at the written proposal, it seems to me there are a number of issues that are beyond the competence of the board to decide, that they're the competence of the town of Haddon to decide.
Beyond the authority of this board to decide.
And the authority, and so it seems, but it seems to me that it might be relevant if they're going to have a referendum to know, for them to know whether this is a viable, you know, to know as much as possible about the offer, and because that's part of your decision-making process, right?
Well, that is the question though, as to, let's just game this out. If the town of Haddon voters decide that they do want the town to take ownership of the property, the RAC proposal, I don't think exists anymore.
Maybe, but it's a possibility. It just seems to be a relevant piece of information for the voters.
I think, yeah, I think the RAC proposal would go away in that instance, if the town of Haddon, I mean, this is between you, the Board of Education, and RAC, not between the town of Haddon and RAC. And I doubt that Haddon residents would support this proposal. We would go out for our own RFP process if the town's residents wanted to sell those properties. There's also many errors in here that doesn't even, this wouldn't even work. $10,000 they're going to give as a deposit, again, open-ended, to the town. They're not giving it to the town. I don't think RAC did their homework before they submitted this to you guys.
That's not, yeah, it's still, it's a frame of reference for one author that wasn't in question.
That's what I was going to say, so basically, if the town of Haddon decides to take ownership, then it would be up to the town of Haddon to decide how they want to move forward and do an RFP of their own or however useful they would want it to be.
And I'm just trying to...
Joanne, I'd like to finish, please. And so, you know, if the Board of Education wanted to look at that, I would say yes, because, you know, this is a unique situation, there are things in there that have to do with the Board of Finance, have to do with planning zoning, which is why there's a bunch of here, the town planner, there's many pieces of that. So I think to come to some type of conclusion for the town and get it to referendum and vote, and then depending upon that, then if we need to come back, we can do that, and if not, then the town of Haddon will take it from there.
So is it your preference that you don't have a confirmation?
I would say that if we could accomplish this, I don't think this is very difficult in the next 60 days, because it's also going to affect our town budget, and we have to take that into consideration, correct? As my chair and my Board of Finance is looking at me. Because if the town of Haddon does decide to take ownership, it's going to be the $90,000 of hearing costs that has to be added to our town budget before we even decide what to do with it, and/or whatever the price is on it. So I think that we need to have that information, because we voted on our town budget, you know, two days after, a week after, public hearings, shortly thereafter your budget is passed. And again, with the moving pieces going on in the state, our budget isn't going to be finalized. So if we can get this, I would say 60 days, if we set some type of window, again, I would have wanted to be a dead stop, because we would like to be able to go through the process. We can do that, and then just come back together and take it from there, because the board may or may not need to be involved in the next steps of what happens to the building.
Okay. Then the one other thing I'd ask fellow board members to consider, and also the town of Killmore to consider, is the cost of maintaining the building is already in our budget. So to the extent that it gets extracted, please factor that in as you prepare your budget, and/or if there is some other proposal that you'd like to make related to that, you consider that as you consider all other aspects of this.
Joanne, can I add something?
Yes.
Again, 60 days is way too short, I think, for the town to investigate the building, look at the various, I mean, I'm sure some of our town officials might have already gone on some of the tours, but you actually gave a longer period of time to put out your RFP than the town of Haddon has now to get this done, and I think it's a rush job. I really think you need time to look at it and talk to our residents about it.
I'm a little confused, because you first elected and just said she could do it in 60 days.
Yeah, but that's her own opinion. My opinion is 60 days is too short.
So then, so we asked the Board of Selectmen of Haddon to agree on the potential... Yeah, except that, again, if the town of Haddon decides to take the building, we don't want the building to sit still. That's been the biggest concern from the merchants and from the residents in the center of town. So I think it behooves us to look at our options and get it to referendum and let the taxpayers decide what they want to do, because we don't want the building to sit empty.
And so what is the question that you'll put before them?
I don't know that yet. Legal counsel's going to have to help you with that. You know, we're not there yet as far as price, but, you know, I can answer some of those questions, but again, we don't want a building to sit empty. That's the problem.
So just with respect to the timing, in my own opinion, one thing that has just become abundantly clear to me in the last three months or so, is that the folks of Haddon and Killmore can not only get up to speed, become educated, and form an opinion on any issue presented in a very short amount of time.
Thank you, Joel. Speaking of that, actually, Joel, that brings up a good point. I would like to ask the, all the people around this table if they would entertain a 45-minute public comment section, session at the end of this meeting.
After our business is concluded, obviously.
I don't believe that we are able to amend the agenda.
No, it wouldn't be amending the agenda, it would just be allowing people to speak.
Well, the point is, as I pointed out at the beginning, we have several people at this table who need to get to their next meeting, and without much time to do so.
Yeah, that's fine, they can go, but the rest of the people...
I would just ask, is anybody else interested in having that done?
Thank you.
Yeah, sitting at this table.
I beg your pardon, Suzanne.
I said, is anybody else sitting at this table anxious to do that?
I never object to hearing from the public, so...
And the point is that, the reason there is no public comment item on the agenda is that our past practice with meetings involving our other town boards has been not to have a public comment item on the agenda, so that we can have the kind of discussion that we're having.
Right, that's why I said at the end, after our business.
But it's not on the agenda.
I understand, and I understand legal counsel saying that it's a special meeting, you can't add to the agenda, however, the chairman can allow for public comments at the end of the meeting, after the business is concluded, or I'm willing to stay and listen after adjournment if the chair does not allow for public comments, and listen to the public.
I would just ask, how many people sitting here want an added 45-minute session for public comment at the end of the meeting?
It's not binding, you're just trying to get some...
I'm just trying to get the...
Yeah, will someone like to do that? Does anybody else want to do that?
I'm happy to sit with Melissa afterwards if people want to talk.
Okay.
Me too.
Okay.
Can I, yeah, one comment?
Please.
Public comment, I think it is fine. I would much rather, I will be happy to sit here after a reading so I can have a dialogue with the public. That's much more useful productive than public comment, so I will make myself available, and if you want to come chat, come chat.
Thank you, Joel. All right, well, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Okay? And we are adjourned.
Yes.
Bill, how you doing? Nice to meet you. I'm going to walk it down the sea, I just have a chance.
Let me get a second to see if I can watch the situation. Actually, we're in charge. That's it. One man, Jeffy?
There's a difference. I'll see if I can watch it. And then we should have to go to the back. I know what it is. Yeah.
Yeah.